...willn't let you go. I'm going to go over it for you. 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 I'm going to go over it for you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My apologies for starting late. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, committee of adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. This will be a virtual public hearing and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting either by their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Only the committee members will be participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishna Bay, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Matisse peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto was covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act, 1990 is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto was called to order. My name is Alan Smithies and I will chair today's meeting. Joining us on the panel today are Giuseppe Bartolo, Nadini Sankar Peralta, and Thomas Klassen. City staff are also present: Daniel Antonacci, Simon Lam, Jenny Kotas, and Adam Wills. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone in attendance today who wants to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure is as follows. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with their presentation if required by the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, is given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. When addressing the committee, please state clearly your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters described in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee of the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. In order to ensure that a revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the applicant are informed of the changes, the committee may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application are allowed to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of discussion on the item. The application is then taken into committee for a decision. Members of the committee, if I could get... Are there any committee members here this morning who have any conflicts of interest they'd like to declare? No, thank you. We need to adopt the minutes of our previous meeting of the 11th of June. Could I have a motion to adopt those minutes, please?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt those minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Can I have someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Bartolo, seconds. Thank you, those minutes are adopted. Mr. Secretary-Treasurer, we have no files to close. Thank you. We'll now proceed with the first item on our agenda, which is item number one. 186 Ellersley Avenue.
Chair and members, I'd like to bring to your attention: Amir Farr is on the chat as the applicant, but has lost the connectivity to be able to be unmuted. So Amir, if you can hear me, please either log in and log back out or call in using the phone, one or the other, and we'll be able to reconnect you in a moment. With that being said, Mr. Chair, would you like to proceed to item number two then?
I'll proceed to the next item. Okay, item number one is put on hold. Item number two, 20 Florence Avenue, we now proceed with that. Mr. Wills, do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
We are ready.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant there? Hello, is the applicant there for 20 Florence Avenue?
It's Jim, he's here. Jim, go ahead.
What I'm going to do, Mr. Wills, I'm going to hold this one as well, okay? Well, I'm sorry, my apologies for the technical difficulties beyond our control. We're now on item number... Proceed to item number three.
Mr. Chair, we can go back to item number one. Amir has called in.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll go back to item number one. Item number one, 186 Ellersley Avenue. Is the applicant there?
Yes, hello?
Sir, can I get your... Can I get your name and address, please?
Amir Farr, 186 Ellersley Avenue.
Yes, can I get your name and address, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Amir Farr. Address 186 Ellersley Avenue, North York, M2N1Y4.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, remember to speak up and to speak clearly and slowly so that we can hear you. So if... Before you... We're going to ask for a presentation from you, sir. Have you seen the... Have you seen the city planning report dated 22 May?
Yes.
And you're aware that it recommends that your application be refused?
Yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay, so what I would suggest you do, sir, is that you can make a presentation to the committee and what you see as the merits of your proposal, especially in light of what the city planning report is recommending. You have five minutes to make a presentation to the committee.
I have a statement prepared that I'm going to read for you. My name is Amir Farr and I'm the agent representing the owner of 186 Ellersley Avenue. This property is located in a neighborhood in which many severances have been approved in the past. We'll go through these shortly. This property has purchased by the owner to build two houses, one for himself, one for his parents. All objections against the application from the neighbors, the planning department, and the councillor are referring to the characteristics of the neighborhood. However, the proposed application is in line with existing character of the neighborhood as there are many existing properties with frontages in the range of 30 to 37 feet. Additionally, there are many approved applications for severances in the neighborhood, including the following: 319 Horsham. It was a 64 lot severed to 32 in 2019. 57A Horsham, it was a 60 divided to 230. 145 and 147 Ellersley, it was a 75 severed to 37 and a half. 208 and 210 Ellersley, 75 divided to 37 and a half in 2015. And 186 Horsham, it was a 64 divided to 32, and so on. And the following existing properties have the lot frontages within the range of 30 to 37. 183 Ellersley is 34. Across the street. 170 Ellersley, 33. 168, 33. 166, 33. 175, 177 Ellersley are also 33.33. 185, 34. 157, 36. 127, 35. These are all on Ellersley. 108 Ellersley, 36 and a half. 175 and 177 Churchill, just the street north of Ellersley, is 32 and a half for two lots. 157, 159 Churchill are 36 feet wide. And 139, 143 Ellersley are 35, 225, 223. And lastly, 21 Ellersley are 35 feet frontage. As you can see, there are lots of presence of these in the immediate vicinity of the property. A further consideration is cities' focus on increasing density and affordable housing. Without a proposal such as this, that respects the character of their neighborhood, this will not be achieved for this property. Our application is not against the character of the neighborhood, considering the existing lot sizes and approved severances in the neighborhood. The city planner had... City planning department had a concern about the setback, and we're happy to increase the setback. The between the two properties were 1.9 to 1.2 to meet the zoning bylaws for the lot of those frontages, if that would satisfy the planning department. That's the end of my statement.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm just going to ask, does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. Mr. Wills, is there anyone registered to speak on this item?
Chair and members, there are. The first deputant, Jim Grattis, is ready to speak.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are you there?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, can you speak up?
You know what? I've called them both off the WebEx in my phone, so...
Okay, thank you, sir. You have the opportunity to speak on the item. You have the floor, so you have five minutes to speak.
Okay, good morning. I'm Jim Grattis. I've lived in the community 19 years. I live seven doors west of the applicant and I'm currently the co-president of the West Willardale Neighborhood Association. I oppose this application because the consent requests and side yard setbacks do not respect and reinforce the existing physical character of the neighborhood. The requested severed lots fall in the bottom 5% of the city's lot study of the area. I expected the applicant to argue that some of the 5% of atypical narrow lots exist on the streets, but I counter that the street also has lot sizes similar to the applicant's current lot. Across the street from the applicant at 193 Ellersley, a single home is being constructed on a slightly larger lot. Seven doors to the east, another slightly larger lot at 160 Ellersley has an application built in addition. There was also an error in the list of lots that the applicant mentioned. 185 Ellersley across the street is actually a 40-foot lot, not a 35-foot lot. My next point is the consent would also have a very destabilizing impact because it seeks a 33-foot lot. What's problematic about 33-foot lots is that pairs of side-by-side 50-foot lots could be turned into 33-and-a-third-foot lots. 50-foot lots are the most common lot size in the neighborhood. They're often over half the lot sizes in lot studies. This concern is real. Three blocks north of Ellersley, on Hounslow Avenue, a 65-foot lot was severed with no community opposition because we didn't expect it to get approved. Well, it did, and it led to a request to sever a pair of 50-foot lots at 289 and 291 Hounslow into three 33-and-a-third-foot lots. And it was approved at the OMB, and the decision stated that the deciding factor in this case was the applicant's close proximity to the 65-foot lot that was severed. We also had a similar application immediately north of this applicant that the applicant didn't mention at 105 and 107 Churchill Avenue. Again, a pair of 50-foot lots sought... Or 53-foot lots sought severance into 35-foot lots. That was recently, couple of years ago, refused, denied at the T-Lab. Pairs of side-by-side 50-foot lots are very common. Across the street from me, there's a pair. Two and three doors over from me, there's another pair. The first street north of the applicant, Churchill Avenue, has clusters of dozens of side-by-side 50-foot lots. When 50-foot lots, the most common lot size in the area, are at risk of being changed to 33-and-a-third-foot lots, which are in the bottom 5% of the area, that's a game changer for the neighborhood and its character. And this is one of the reasons why the consent request does not respect and reinforce existing physical character of the neighborhood because of this domino effect that we've seen in the past. So to summarize, the city staff report is strongly opposed to the application. The community with 18 letters of opposition is also opposed. Even the local councillor submitted a letter of opposition. I respectfully request this application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the speaker? Ms. Sankar?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Grattis, thank you for that information. And I do see the echoing of your concerns through the numerous letters that we've received in opposition, including the staff report and the councillors, as you suggested. Now, the applicant has taken some time to go through a number of properties that he believed sit in that proximity of the neighborhood. Sorry, there's a lot of people here. But I just wanted to hear from you. Of all the properties that he has labeled, you know, saying that they have, you know, they sort of meet the characteristic of what he's trying to do, I would like to hear your thoughts on that. Is that true or not? Because you've just suggested that the property opposite was not a 35-foot... You said it was 40-feet lot. I'm just wanting to hear your take on what he said, if there's credibility to that.
It's selectively picking what ties into what he's looking for. There's just as many lots that are dramatically larger. The most prevalent lot size on the street is a 50-foot lot, which is, I don't know, 40% larger than the lot that he's seeking. Many of... And he's kind of helping my argument. Many of the lot sizes he quoted were the result of some severances. Severances lead to more severances. And what's particularly problematic about this severance request is how does a committee or a T-Lab deny severing a pair of 50s into 33s when a 66 is allowed to be severed into a 33? The same arguments apply. And again, I didn't want to belabor the counterpoint, but he quoted 145 Ellersley as a lot, a 75 lot that was severed into 237 and a half-foot lots. That is pre-existing unique bylaws to that application that already allow for that severance. So again, it's taking a lot size area of maybe 600 homes and selectively picking the examples that are in the minority to reinforce the argument.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any further questions of the speaker? Mr. Wills, do we have anyone else registered to speak?
Members and Chair, we do. It's Lucy, and I will queue her up.
Okay. Madam, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Madam, can I get your name and address, please?
My name is Lucy Pecchia, and I am the owner of 197 Ellersley Avenue.
Okay, thank you, madam. If you can make your views known to us.
Okay, I've owned the property since 1985, and I have had other labors sever the property, but they've increased the lot. Like the one next door to me, 201, as the one that the gentleman was talking about, there's two braggadocio homes there. But the owners have made it better. They've increased the frontage. In this case, this gentleman is asking for 11 variances. Starting from the west side, it's less .58 meters. The east side, .89 meters less. Then they want the minimum required step factor is required 1.8. They're short .26. Then the minimum lot frontage is required 550. They want less, 148.38. That's a lot. Then the minimum prep lot line, 4.94 meters less. The lot coverage is over by 1.02 meters. And it goes on and on, like the minimum required step fact. The required is 1.8. They're short .26. You know, the proposed canopy is short 2.6. The maximum height of the side lot line, the side exterior main log, is higher, 1.09 meters. And then it goes on to say the maximum permitted height, 8.8 is required. They're over 1.06 meters higher. And the finished floor, the height, 1.5, and they want 1 meter, .25 meters higher. That's a lot. They're destroying the neighborhood. You know, we don't mind the development. We encourage new development. But we do want them to respect the front lot line. 50 meters is... 50 feet is very appropriate in that area. They don't allow that in the... The Bridle Pass, or Forest Hill, or Rosedale to decrease the frontage and everything else. I'm very disappointed. Now they have a beautiful lot. Can they not build a beautiful house and, you know, fit in with the neighborhood? Compatible. So this is my logic, and I hope that you... It's a major, to me, this is major renovation. And I would ask the committee to... I thank you. It's not a minor, this is major, in my opinion. Thank you for listening to me. Hello?
Thank you, madam. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Thank you. Mr. Wills, do we have anyone else registered?
There is no one else to speak.
No one else? Okay, thank you. The applicant has the opportunity to address the concerns raised by the previous speakers. Sir, are you there? Sir, are you there?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have the opportunity to address the concerns and views expressed by the previous speakers.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. First, Jim brought a couple of points that... Well, there was one mistake I may have made in 183 Ellersley, but there are about 10 or 12 different examples that I gave that are accurate. The other mention was that the main concern that I heard from Jim was that the dividing the lots of the 250s into several 30s. This property is next to a park. The city purchased the next-door property and converted it into a park. There's no way that this property can be merged with anything else to divide, to be divided. Again, the house next door is a brand-new, relatively new house with a smaller frontage, cannot be divided. And the other point that was brought up was that the... This is out of character with the neighborhood with the percentage of the houses that are in the 30s. I believe Jim himself lives in a severed house of the street with the smaller frontage. And the examples that I gave you is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And I can't count in 7, 8, and 9 other examples that I gave you. 10 other examples that I gave you, they're all on Ellersley and with the frontage that is very close to what applicant is asking. And as for the setback concern that was brought up from 1.8 to... If we're asking for 1.2 or 0.9. 1.84 is for... According to the zoning bylaw, I believe, is for the larger lots. Once the lot is smaller, the setback automatically changes to 1.2, I believe. And 1.2 is what the applicant is asking with the exception of the setback that I mentioned for between two houses that applicant had expressed intention to change that to 1.2 as well. 1.9 to meet the concern of the planning department. And the other... The other factor here is that these applications are going through T-Lab or are getting approval. And we're trying to build something here that can be affordable, can be built. And the applicant can enjoy the property with their parents, with their elderly parents. And with a lot this size large, it's just construction of that is not affordable. The houses would be more than what they can afford. And you rarely see examples of that in the neighborhood. That's the end of my statement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? No questions of the speaker? Could I get a motion on this application, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair? Yeah, so having heard the testimonies from the residents who have actually lived there for many years, seeing the councillor's letter and the approach that staff who have the expertise are advising us, and hearing from the testimony of the applicant himself, I don't feel convinced from the applicant that I can approve a consent of this nature. I also believe that we have to strongly adhere to the past as not being precedent-setting for our future decisions. And with that in mind, I'm going to refuse the consent, you know, to sever these properties.
And Ms. Sankar?
And touch the variances as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir. You're recommending refusal of the severance and the variances?
Yes.
Thank you. Someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Klassen, seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Sir, your application has been refused. Thank you very much. We're now on item number two. Mr. Wills, is the applicant there? Thank you.
The applicant is present.
Uh, Mr. Wills, I'm just going to ask, do we have any other registered speakers on this item?
Item number two does not have any deputants.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and, hello, is the applicant there?
Is the applicant there?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Can you hear me okay?
I can. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask before, before we start, have you had the opportunity to see the city planning comments of the 22nd of May?
Uh, sir, I've seen the comments from city planning of May 22nd, and we have no issues with its content, sir.
Yeah, with the recommended conditions.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And have you, have you also had the opportunity to see the development engineering report of the 11th of May?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, we have not been provided with any other, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, I should have started at the beginning. Can we get your full name and address, please?
Yes, sir. Jim Katsopoulos, 27 Field Flower Crescent, Richmond Hill, L4E 5E9.
Thank you, sir. I'm just going to ask, you have had the opportunity to read the development engineering report of the 11th of May?
Mr. Chair, the only report that we have that was made available to us is the planning department report for May 22nd.
Well, the, the report is there in the electronic files, so I'll, you can look at it at your leisure, but it's the standard consent conditions. What I'll also ask, I'll just ask the committee, there is no, there is no one registered here to speak on this item other than the applicant. We have a report from city planning that's favorable to the consent minor variances. I just wanted to ask the committee, would it like a presentation?
We'd care.
Okay, thank you. Could I get a motion on this application, please? Mr. Klassen?
Yes, I will move to approve the consent and minor variance applications, and that this should be, should be done in accordance with the conditions as outlined in the May 22nd staff report.
As, as well as the 11th of May development engineering conditions?
Yes, that's right.
Standard consent conditions. Thank you. Someone to second Mr. Klassen's motion? Mr. Bartolo, seconds. All those in favor? Sir, your application has been unanimously approved, subject to development engineering and city planning conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are now on item number three, 24 Dallas Road. Is the applicant there?
Yes, I am. My name is John Sibenech, and I represent the owner. I am the agent for this property at 24 Dallas Road.
Can I get your address, please, sir?
My address is 24 Ovita Avenue, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to ask, Mr. Wills, do we have anyone other than the applicant registered to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair and committee members, we do not have any deputants for this item.
Okay, thank you. Sir, I wanted to, I wanted to ask, before we start, have you seen the city planning report of the 20th of May?
I've seen the one from June 17th, I believe, that one there with the conditions of the, you know...
The, the report I'm referring to indicated they have no objections, provided that the proposal developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the committee of adjustment and attached as attachment one to their report, and that the driveway be built with permeable pavers. Have you seen that condition?
Yes, I have. We're in agreement.
Okay, thank you. Have you seen the report from Transportation Services dated the 26th of June?
I haven't, I haven't seen that one, but I thought it, uh...
Okay, I would suggest you check the electronic files that are, that are available. It's posted there. It indicates they have no objection with respect to the driveway, provided that the driveway and associated curb cut shall be a maximum of six meters wide in the public right-of-way. It requested to straighten the proposed flared driveway within the public road allowance, and the existing driveway accesses on Pennard Court must be removed and restored to soft landscaping. Those are the conditions, recommended conditions from Transportation Services.
We're in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to ask the committee, does the committee, it's, the variances you're asking for, sir, are pretty straightforward and clear. I'm just going to ask the committee, does it have any questions or would it like a Mr. Klassen?
Um, it's just a comment, I believe there's also, there's a memo from, from forestry as well.
Yeah, the one from urban forestry, are the standard urban forestry conditions?
I haven't read that one.
Which is, hang on just a moment. Submission of a complete application to permit or injure or remove a city-owned tree. Sir, are you removing any city-owned trees?
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you. That is a condition of urban forestry, but if, just so that you're aware of it, that's a condition they're recommending.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? Can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I motion to approve this application. I'll make it subject to the recommendations of the May 20th staff report, in that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing submitted to the committee, and that the driveway be built with permeable pavers. And that will also piggyback onto the conditions of the transportation report that was received, as well as subject to forestry.
Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Someone to second Ms. Sankar's motion? Mr. Bartolo, seconds. All those in favor? That motion carries. Sir, your application has been unanimously approved, subject to city planning, Transportation Services, and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you, committee.
Sir, thank you very much. Item number four, which is 58 Harneworth Drive. Is the applicant there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Wills, do we have any other speakers on this item?
Committee and Chair, there are deputants for this item.
Okay, thank you. Sir, I'm going to ask you to make a presentation to the committee on what you see as the merits of your proposal. Have you had the opportunity to read the memorandum from dated June 22nd from Counselor, Counselor Carroll?
Yeah, we do, went through all the city's zoning, give you comments and all that.
Sir, before you start, my mistake, as, as I'm advised again, I need your full name and address.
Okay, I'm Architect Ravi Dhoyforday Incorporated. My address is 2760 Victoria Park. The property address is 58 Harneworth Drive.
Sir?
File number 20651/19NY.
Sir, it's very hard to hear you. Can you speak up? Speak up and speak slower.
Yeah, I'm Architect Ravi Dhoyforday from 276...
And, and give us your name and address again, please.
Yeah, I'm Architect Ravi Dhoyforday.
Okay, thank you.
Address is, address is 2760 Victoria Park, North York, and then the property address is 58 Harneworth Drive.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to let you know there is a memorandum from dated the June 22nd from Counselor Carroll, who has a concern that what you're proposing to do here is introduce two secondary suites in the building. So you may want to speak to that item, you may want to speak to that in your presentation to the committee.
Uh, yeah, basically, how it happens, that secondary, once the basement finished, we did it, basically, it's for the use of the owner, and there is no intention to rent it to the, some tenants and all that. So the owner is using that, since they're having the bigger family, they need that basement to be used for their own purpose. Another thing is that, like, the entire design of the existing house is at the multiple levels, so we are not doing any extension as of this third floor or something like that. Whatever the existing height, height of the roof is there, that we are sticking to it, and we are just doing the extension at the back. So if this, you can see the number, three variants, we are requesting 1 to 3. One is, I think, a number of platforms, another is the area of the platform, and third is the maximum number of story. So this basically is simply because of the multiple level design of the house, and we are not going above the existing height of the building. Yeah, yeah, that's it I want to say, sir.
So you're claiming, sir, that this, there's only a single suite in the basement?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Ms. Sankar?
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question to ask the applicant about the basement suite itself. Are you saying that that is a completely separate entrance? And also, how many suites in the home? Is it a full house to the upper part of the house, or are they divided into separate suites as well, with separate entrances?
No, we do provide the separate entrance because, yeah, they have the beautiful backyard, and then they want access to the backyard directly from the basement as well. But this is a single-family unit, yeah, only one family is living in this house. There is no any other tenant, and no, any secondary suite as such.
I, that didn't answer my question. My question was, the, you've answered it, that the basement is a separate suite with a walkout to the backyard, and it has a separate entrance. Within the actual house itself, are there separate suites, separate entrances?
No.
Or is it just one entrance into the entire house?
Only one entrance to the entire house.
Ms. Sankar, did you get your question answered?
Uh, yes, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any, Mr. Wills, we have people registered to speak on this item?
We do, member, or Mr. Chair. I'll queue up the first one now.
Okay, thank you. Hello, is Speaker there? Hello? Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. My husband is gonna speak for us.
Madam, before you start, can I please get your name and address, please?
My name is Patricia Munoz. I'm here with my husband, Jose Burgos. We live in the house 53 Harneworth Drive, is on the other side of the property that we are discussing now.
Okay, thank you, madam. Please go ahead.
So our, our only concern, this is Jose Burgos, our only concern is with the request number three, is the number of stories for the house. It's, that the request is three, and there is nothing like that in the neighborhood. So we think this goes against the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anything?
Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Is there anything?
Can he clarify, can he clarify a little bit? Because in his presentation, he said that he's no changing, but in the letter, it clarifies that the maximum number of story is going to two, from two to three. So I think this is a discrepancy in that information?
Like, yes, how can, how can he keep the, the height of the building?
I'm sorry, only one person can speak at a time. Okay, one person can speak at a time, that's it. Thank you. With regards to, with regard to the lady's last question, I'll ask the speaker to address that issue when he comes, when he comes back on, okay? Do you have anything else?
Thank you.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wills, do we have anyone else registered to speak?
We do. Ben Torres will be up next.
Hello, are you there? Hello, are you there? No. Sir, are you there?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Yeah, can I get your name and address, please, sir?
Yeah, James Gardner, I'm the next-door neighbor at 56 Harneworth Drive.
Okay, you have the opportunity to voice your concerns with the application, sir?
No concerns on my part. I was calling to support and watch the proceedings.
I'm, sir, can you repeat that?
I have no concerns, I have no protest. I was calling to support and watch the proceedings for my neighbor.
Okay, so you're in support of the application?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. Is, Mr. Wills, is there anyone else to speak on this?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Bartolo has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bartolo, did you have a question?
I have a question for the applicant, if all of the deputants are...
Okay, I'll, I'll just, just a moment, sir, I'll, I'll just ask if we have any more speakers. Are there any more speakers registered?
Mr. Chair and members, we do have one more speaker, Ben Torres, but I'm, I'm not seeing his contact, oh, standby.
Is the speaker there?
Yes.
Yes, hello, sir, can I get your name and address, please?
Mr. Torres, please sign out. Please only use one op, op, application, in this case, the phone number. Please log out of any other WebEx applications you have going, so we don't have any background noise. Please just stick to the phone. Go ahead.
Okay, now we can hear you. Thank you. Can you hear us? Yes, thank you very much.
Can I get your full name and address?
Yes, thank you very much. I am Benedict Torres, a resident of the street at 51 Harneworth Drive.
And it would help, sir, if you can speak up a little bit.
Okay. Can you, can you hear?
Please go ahead.
Right, okay, so, so, so I, I am here to express a number of concerns under two categories, under temporary disruption, a potential permanent disruption to the neighborhood. Area one is, is a little bit too biased, a previous neighbor in terms of, of this application potentially disrupting the look and feel and the character of the neighborhood. Specifically, I, I refer into, to page two of the, of the notice of dispassion to our home, where specifically states, amongst other things, that there are potential modifications to the maximum, the listed number of platforms, the maximum area, doubling the maximum area of the depth, or the area of the building, and very, very importantly, they specifically state that they are, they are planning then to put a net new story onto this particular property, that the proposed number of stories is clearly listed at, at three, as opposed to the current two. So there's no home on this street with this proposed structure. So to come back to my point, one, my take is that this is a, a, a potentially material and massive construction project. This is a child-friendly street, and my concern, one of my concerns is the, is the disruption with trucks and contractors or whatever have prolonged the year of time on the street, that's the one. Secondly, potential devaluation of properties. You've been fortunate that property values have appreciated in this neighborhood. You guys, and material change being made to sell property on this particular street. My concern is that it will, it will by extension devalue the, of, of, of potential, devalue the, 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 the value of the other properties on the street, would affect that, this could cause a rise to development. In other words, other property owners may feel justified to, to, to request additional stories and a, a, a potential other, other... stories and a, a, a potential other, other material modifications to their property with the potential of construction rabbit hole in terms of, of sustained construction on, on the street, with this noise and, 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 and the risk to the kids on the street, that's, that's the other point, devaluation. The third point, there's a, there's a known issue, there's a known issue with creation of rooming houses on Victoria Park, which is one major street.
Sir, you have to speak up, it's very hard to hear you.
Yes, so where, where, where did, where did I lose you? So I, I'm, I, I mentioned the potential to be, be, be permanent devaluation of the other properties on the street by attempting to create a, a, a massive outsized property, which is against the, the look and feel of the neighborhood, to the potential for devaluation of the existing property. The second point I was making is that if this property is, is, is approved, it could cause a, a, a race to, to redevelopment of the entire street, which would put us into a, a construction cycle on the street. And the third point is the issue of rooming houses. There's a known issue with rooming houses on Victoria Park, which is just one major street over. So my concern is, is we have here the potential for a rooming house, potentially to be used by this family or by other investors or other buyers, potential or potential sale of a life. So those are my concerns, economic concerns, economic concerns, and substantial issues, not just the aesthetics, but also to do with the potential of creating a, a rooming house scenario of what is a, a quiet, owner-occupied street. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions of the speaker?
Thank you.
Okay, is the, is the applicant there? Okay, thank you. Sir, are you there?
I'm here.
Sir, are you the applicant?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bartolo, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions for the applicant. So for starters, sir, it, it appears that you are not actually increasing the overall height of the building, is that correct?
Yeah, we are not increasing any height at all. In fact, if you see the floor plans, all that, the basement, ground floor, and second floor, but the basement is in such a way, because of the multiple levels in the house, it looks like we are adding the third floor, but it's not. There are only basement, ground, and second floor, there is no height in increase of the building, there is no additional third floor at all. So the people who is taking objection, they have some clear misunderstanding, but if you can show them the elevations what we submitted, it's pretty clear that there is no additional third floor.
Yeah, I'm looking at drawing CA 109, showing the front elevation along the street there, and it's, it's clear to me that you're not increasing the height. Are you, is this variance being triggered by a lowering of the basement? Are you lowering the slab-on-grade at lower level?
No, lower level basement is also the same, only what we did, sir, for the need of my client, since they are having the bigger family, we are just doing the extension at the rear without changing the building height, without adding any third floor and all that. You can see the side elevation, what you're seeing it now.
Yes.
So that's the existing basement, the basement is increased, extended at the rear, the ground floor is extended at the rear, and then the second floor also extended at the rear, keeping the existing total overall building height same, no change in the height, no characters change in the front elevation as well. So if the people are saying that the characters of that street is, we are changing, no, the front elevation, if you can see it?
Okay, so, yeah.
It's gonna remain the same, like, no, that's the rear elevation, but if you can see the front elevation, it's gonna remain the same like what we have right now. Look, here you go.
Yes, I see. So you're proposing taking the existing continuation, essentially stretching that backward into the backyard where the additions?
You've got it, you've got it.
Yep, I understand.
And throughout this process, I'm in a close contact with the planner, and whatever they said, okay, this is city support, that we went ahead, we not take any other route than what the city supports and all that. So we work totally up to the city for last four, five months on this project.
Okay, I understand. That's all my questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question, sir, just to follow up on, on Ms. Sankar's question, I'm looking at the, your basement, your ground floor, lower level plan here, and it looks very clear that there's, there's two dwelling units in the basement.
There is only, there is only one unit, sir, only like what the height.
How, how come there's two, how come there are two ki, two kitchens?
It's, it's just the weight bar, because they wanna use that for their own parties and all that.
Well, it looks, it's very, sir, it's very clear that you have two, you're proposing two dwelling units in the basement. They have two, they have separate kitchens, separate entrances, one's one-bedroom, one's two-bedroom.
Yeah, but like, see, the client is living there, mother and father also with them, so that's only like the area where they are, they are gonna, gonna stay and all. So it's not like a separate tenant as such. It's a single family living there.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm just going to ask, does the committee have any further questions on this application? We have no further speakers. There are no further questions, can I get a motion, please? Just note, there are no staff comments in relation to this application. Mr. Klassen, I'm not hearing you. We've lost Mr. Klassen. I'm sorry, Mr. Klassen, we lost you there, can I, can I hear you? Oh, Mr. Klassen, you're, you're muted. Mr. Bartolo, you wanted to make a motion?
I, I do, I mean, I can wait for 30 seconds or minutes.
Mr. Klassen?
To clear up this.
Okay.
This technical difficulty. Okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Bart.
Sure, I'll put forward the motion there, Mr. Chair. I mean, regardless of the number of possible dwelling units in the basement, the items that are proposed in front of us do not pertain to the maximum number of, of the units, and given that it's largely a pre-existing condition, and that the front facade along the street is the same, I am gonna put forward a motion to approve this application.
Okay, has someone to second Mr. Bartolo's motion? Mr. Klassen seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Ms. Sankar opposed. Sir, your application has been approved without condition, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you, thank you everybody.
Mr. Klassen, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, now, okay, we can hear you now, we can hear you now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next one is 37 Annale Drive.
Hi, yeah, I'm Shen Shu Tan, architect.
Just a moment, sir. Sir, I just wanted to ask, can I, can we get your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Shen Shu Tan, architect, 98th Carstel, oh, sir, architect, and the Asian Department of Architecture.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms., Mr. Will, I'm sorry, Mr. Wells, do we have any, any other speakers registered on this item?
Mr. Chair and members, we have no other deputates for this item.
Sir, are you there? You can hear us?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, have you seen the staff report from city planning dated the 22nd of May?
Yes.
And you're aware of their recommended condition, that the proposal be developed substantially in accordance with the north front, south rear, east and west elevation drawings, date-stamped 11 March 2020?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you're aware of that condition, thank you. It's very clear what you're asking for in the four variances before, sir, I'll just ask the committee if it would, has any questions or it would like a presentation?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, since there is, there is no one else registered to speak on this item, sir, if I could, if, committee, if I could get a motion on this application? Mr. Klassen?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move that this item be approved, and that the property be built substantially in accordance with the north, south, west, and east elevation drawings, that are dated March 11th, 2020.
Thank you, and there's also urban forestry conditions.
Oh, yes, that's right, and urban forestry.
Okay, thank you. Someone to second Mr. Klassen's motion? Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application's been unanimously approved, subject to city planning and urban forestry conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next one is 21 Garnier Court. Yes, hello, sir, can I get your name and address, please?
Good morning, this is Lethian Way of Lifestyle Sunrooms in Tewborough, representing Mr. and Mrs. Lewison for 21 Garnier Court in North York.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wells, do we have any other speakers registered for this item?
Mr. Chair and members, there is one person on the line to speak.
Okay, thank you. Sir, in view of the fact that there is someone who would like to speak on this item, if you could give us a presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal? Sir, are you there?
Yes, yes, we are proposing a, we are replacing an existing first-story sunroom and an existing second-story sunroom to its original size, and the minor variance was applied for the area of second floor, tenth floor area. It will maintain the same size as origin.
Okay, that's it, sir?
That's it, only the area of second floor, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none, Mr. Wells, if we can tee up the next speaker, the next deputy? Okay, thank you. Hello? Hello?
Patricia Wong, you're on line.
Well, madam, are you there? Hello, can you hear us?
Pat Wong, you're on, you're on now to speak.
Hello?
Pat, we can hear you, just speak normally and out loud into the microphone and start your speaking, we'll be able to hear you.
Madam, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Can I get your name and address, please?
My name is Patricia Wong, the address is 4 Bali Corner Court.
What, which address, was that again?
Number 4 Bali Corner Court.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed with giving us your views on this application.
Actually, I've sent in an email, and I, I did not plan to speak, and it's a very long email, two pages, and I thought that you have removed my name from speaking. But I do, I have sent in an email, do I have to speak right now? Is it going to impact the decision?
Okay, do you have any objections to the app, this sunroom addition at 21 Garnier Court?
Actually, it's, sorry, is 70% more than the four-meter square area, four square meter, the floor area allowed is four square meters, and is 75% more, so I don't think that's a minor variance. And also, with the bigger sunroof, sunroom replaced, it's going to impact my privacy, the sunlight, and also, as I mentioned in the email, is the views and the character of the neighborhood is going to be impacted. And first of all, I, as I mentioned, the variance is not minor, because it's a 74% increase than the permitted floor area, and also is not desirable for the community, for the, and for the, for my neighbors. And second of all, the intent and purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw is, actually, I'm looking at my notes. The intention of the bylaw and also the official plan include the provision of rear yard open space, and does not include constructing a visible extension building which causes a loss of sunlight, privacy, openness, and views to the neighboring properties. So that's why I sent in then two-page, two-page, yes, that's correct, that's the one. And I strongly object to the proposal, because the requested variance does not meet the four tests, and, as I said, I strongly oppose to the application. Thank you, sir, thank you, madam.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Okay, there being no questions of the speaker, the applicant, the applicant, are you there?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, before we go farther, one of the members does have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sankar?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Wong, thank you for being brave to speak, it's not the easiest thing to do online. So I, I understand that, so, so don't worry about it. I just do have a question about the, you know, the positioning of your home with respect to the, the actual platform, because that's what's in question here, is just, you know, that, that, that actual platform and, and the size of it, but where are you positioned in terms of your home in the location of this?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned it at the beginning. We are located to the east of the property. I think in the letter, the application, there's a map. I'm situated to the east of the subject property. So when I, most of my windows looking out to is my rear, the, how can I say that? The rear windows of our property, including the two of our bedrooms, including the master bed room, family room, dining room, and also our garden is facing the subject property. And also with some greens, the trees from 23 Garnier, and with the extended sunroom is going to block the sun, like, we won't be able to see the sunset. Did I answer your question?
Thank you, Ms. Wong, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? Is the applicant there?
Yes, I'm here.
You've heard the comments from the previous speaker, do you want to address them?
Yes, I would, I would like to share some pictures, that, just, I just want to make sure that you have accessed my desktop here.
I'm sorry, sir, what, what was that again? Can you speak up?
I would like to share some pictures, and I just want to make sure that my desktop is showing here.
No, we can't, we have no ability to do that, sir. And you, and that would be new evidence, if you wanted to present that, it should have been at the beginning of your presentation.
Actually, we can submit a picture after, but I would like to expand the detail to each items here. So according to the, the planning department, that, we agree with the planning department, that the privacy won't be an issue, that the, the property for Bali Corner Court is on the straight east side of our property, and there are a couple very huge trees in both of our backyard, and I wouldn't say our proposed sunroom is an issue to the privacy and the sunlight. And we would also point that the existing sunrooms have been there for 40 years, over 40 years, that's it, and it's the same size, and our, our proposed, proposed structure is to replace the second-floor sunroom to its original size. And we also find out there are some, there are a couple other second-story platforms in, in this street, has a similar architecture character. And also, also that Ms. Tizelbaum mentioned, the, the minor variance is applied interest for 70. And also, that Ms. Wong mentioned, the minor variance is applied increased for 74%, but it has been related because the base number was relatively small. And also, I would point out that we have no objection from all related authorities into the ravine, the nature feature, and the local conservation authority and planning department.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, just to be clear, with, we had,
Yes.
the previous speaker was talking about the additional length of the building and it affecting your sunlight. Just wanted to be clear, the addition you're proposing, the sunroom, the sunroom, you're still within the building length specified by the zoning bylaw, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We are not changing the size of all existing structures.
So you, So yes, you're complying with the length bylaw, with the length requirements of the bylaw. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, as participant, you can say, root J is proposed story sunroom.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any further questions of the speaker? Can I, oh, Ms. Sankar?
Just one quick one through you, Mr. Chair. So you're just, just in terms of the privacy issues to, to, you know, share Mrs. Wong's concerns that there are developed trees that are along that edge that have been there for years and years on both sides of the property that actually does respect the privacy of the existing structure right now. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct. And I would mention that the lot is too lot away.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? Being none, can I get a motion on this application, please? Ms. Sankar?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, hearing both sides, I do believe that it meets the four tests, and I'm motioning to approve this application.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sankar. Summon the second Ms. Sankar's motion. Mr. Klassen, second. All those in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application has been unanimously approved without condition. Thank you very much. Item number 7, 364 Green Road.
Thank you and have a nice day.
Good morning.
Greer Road, pardon me, Greer Road.
Good morning. I'm Vanessa Kwan, agent for the owners at 364 Greer Road.
Because, thank you. Mr. Wells, I'm just going to ask, do we have any other speakers registered for this item?
There are two deputies who'd like to speak to this item.
Okay, thank you. Madam, you have two variances before us, one related to roofs, eaves, and the other with the floor space index. So if you could give the committee a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your proposal?
I'm actually here to formalize,
And before you start, madam, madam, before you start, can we get your full name and address?
My name is Vanessa Kwan of 222 Courtly Boulevard in Toronto.
Okay, thank you, madam. Please go ahead.
So I'm actually here to formalize a letter of withdrawal that was submitted by the homeowners last week. The clients have decided to withdraw their application at this time.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Secretary Treasurer, can, do we need a motion to withdraw the application or? Okay, I'll, can I have a, the, committee members, the applicant is requesting to withdraw and close the file. Can I have a motion to withdraw and close the file? Mr. Bartolo?
Mr. Chair, I'll put forward a motion to withdraw and close this file.
Okay, thank you. Summon the second Mr. Bartolo's motion. Mr. Klassen, seconds. All those in favor? And motion carries. Madam, your application has been withdrawn and closed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, madam.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if we break for just two minutes?
Would you like to break?
Just for a couple of minutes, till 11:30 is fine with me.
Is 10 minutes enough?
Five's enough for me.
Okay. Ms. Sankar, would you need more time? Five? Okay, we'll take five minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll return in 11:35. Thank you very much for your patience.
Hello, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk about the program in Malta, the July program. The program is being promoted by the government of Malta. It is a very important event. What I would like to say about Malta, is that the series "Right, Marry" has a special episode about the Albe Hafna of Malta and the Teatro Manuel. And for the third part of the program, is that the group of comedians, "The Comedy Nights", has a sketch about the event. It is on PBS, and it is on Malta.
It's a bit overwhelmed, but very good. It's late. I'm going to sleep.
The way that Nila Jus is in Malta, who has been on the road, is euphoric in the beach, and she is justified.
Imagine he will break the record, and he will be able to do it.
Dedication, and the courage, and the dedication, and the love. And the sea is wild, and it's hard to breathe. It's not like you can touch it, or you can touch it. The courage, it's tremendous. And both, it's a tremendous experience. It's a great time. But this is his life. He sleeps, works, and thinks swimming.
In addition to the campaign "Wave of Change", to solve the problem of plastic in the ocean, and to end the pandemic of COVID, it's an opportunity. To make it happen.
It's an opportunity, because of COVID, and he's a full-time athlete.
Even though he has been working hard, and he has been trying, Nila Jus, who has been working hard, is going to make it happen, to achieve a greater success.
Because he has been improving himself. He has been improving himself, and he is going to achieve a greater success.
Is it ready, huh?
It's failing. Limitations are your mind, so we'll see how far it's to far.
The last day of Malta, Nila Jus, who has been on the road, has been on the road for 15 minutes. At the end, he saw a car coming from the back of the car, in a distance of 30 kilometers, in a time of 13 minutes. The distance between Nila Jus and Malta is considered to be the biggest in the world, in the ocean. The record for Nila Jus is a historic. It has been seen in many places, such as Shihat, and Provak's Road.
The authority of tourism and the solutions for the city of Zuri is to allow the people to live in this peaceful place to solve the problem of space and parking. In the United States of America, they are offering services and transport services to people in Zuri. They are providing food, water, and water, and they are providing Santa Claus with it. The story is different.
The city of Zuri is a restaurant that is very crowded. It's a contrast of the city, and it's very crowded, to the restrictions of the pandemic.
I'm not sure what you mean by that. It's not like you can go there, and it's not like you can do it. It's not like you can do it.
The restaurant in Zuri is a hotel, and it's a hotel. The situation is very difficult.
The airport is always busy, and it's very crowded. The roads are very busy, and it's not like you can go there.
In Zuri, it's very crowded.
For example, the roads are very crowded, and it's not like you can go there.
There are several administrative services, which are very busy, and they are trying to provide transport services to people. The administration is trying to provide services, and they are trying to help. They are trying to help, and they are trying to help. The services are funded by the authority of tourism, and it is 13,000 euros.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session. Thank you for your patience. Committee members, all there? Yes, great, terrific. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now on item number eight, 113 Ridley Boulevard. I just wanted to emphasize to the committee members, we did receive a piece of correspondence from a neighbor that I guess had not been included in the riddle. I'll just give you the name here. It was correspondence from,
Mr. Chair and members, there are multiple correspondence sent to you on behalf of myself for you to review for this file.
Okay, from, ones from Heidi Miller and Jonathan Hamilton at 98 Joyce Boulevard. And there's also some from Era Strategy Studio. And that's by Terry Mills. Okay, thank you. Okay, is the, is the agent there?
Good morning. My name is Michael Bissett. I'm the agent.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to ask, sir, can I get your full name and address?
I'm Michael Bissett, B-I-S-S-E-T-T. And it's 3 Church Street, Suite 200, Toronto. I'm on a land use plan with Bothfields.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask, have you seen the city planning report of the 17th of March?
Yes, I have.
And you're aware that they're recommending that variance number two, relating to the proposed third story be refused? And that they're recommending modifying variance number six, the east side yard setback to a minimum of 1.2 meters?
Yes, I'm aware.
And what's, just, they're also indicating that if the committee approves the application, that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan and east side elevations drawing submitted with the committee of adjustment. And I just wanted to ask, sir, did you want to make any changes to your, any modifications to your submission?
So, yes, I've had discussions with the applicant about, there was conditions recommended by planning, well, in terms of their recommendation on the setback. And they're willing to accept the change to item number six, to 1.2 meters rather than 0.94. And they're also willing to, there was a transportation services comment with respect to the driveway, which in relation to variance eight of the driveway width, the transportation services had recommended no flare on the driveway, I believe, and also one-meter setback from the east property line for the driveway. And the applicant is willing to provide for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
As a condition.
But with, as, I guess, so let me just,
Otherwise, no changes.
Yeah, let me just be clear here. Transportation Services report, you're aware of what their conditions are? Urban Forestry had recommended refusing the application due to the impact on two privately-owned trees. Are there any trees that are being impacted by this particular proposal?
Yes, the front tree, which is along Ridley, you submitted an arborist report, I don't know if it's in your package, but it does stipulate that it's damaged. And obviously, we would need to get Urban Forestry to sign off to get the permit to remove that tree. So I would be fine with a condition of getting Urban Forestry permission. I mean, that would be required regardless.
It's your position with regards to the tree, sir, that it's, it's in poor health?
Well, yes, the arborist report notes that it's damaged and potentially hazardous, given that it's damaged and being held up by Cobra cables. I'm not entirely sure of what that is, but it is noted in the arborist report. They recommend it's being removed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wells, is, do we have any other speakers, deputants scheduled?
Mr. Chair and members, we do have deputants wishing to speak about this project.
Thank you, sir. What I'm going to ask is, if you could give us a presentation on your application. I note, sir, that you're proposing to change variance number six, which is, the, which currently reads, the proposed east side yard setback is 0.94, and you're proposing it to read, the proposed east side yard setback is 1.2 meters. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. So if you could give us a brief presentation on what you see as the merits of your revised application, please?
The, the application is for a new home for the applicant to, for his family, his three children, his wife, and his aging mother-in-law. They would, they're providing for room for her to stay in a home in age-in-place rather than to locate into seniors' care in a seniors' home outside of the home. And so the applicant would be removing the existing home and constructing what is a three-story home, but designed to have the physical character of a two-story home. And what I mean by that is, and if you And what I mean by that is, and if you've seen the elevation that I had sent in, and potentially you could bring it up here, there's, this is not my submission. This is a submission from someone else on the screen. But it's a, it essentially has a roof, uh, a roof line, a mansard roof line generally in line with every, the buildings, the other homes along the street with three small dormers. And so, in terms of maintaining, respecting and reinforcing the physical character of the street, it is my opinion that it does do that. I note that the adjacent, uh, home to the east, uh, sorry, to the west at 115 Ridley, uh, did receive a three-story permission. And I note that planning staff said that that was a technically different, technically different because its basement level was, uh, at a higher level and technically was a first floor. But if you look at 115 Ridley as compared to the subject application, I would, I would argue that in fact, this building, this proposal looks more like a two-story building than 115 Ridley, given that the garage isn't, uh, sucking down and the garage in this space is actually at sort of grade level, the first level. And so, in my view, in terms of the, what I've reviewed in terms of the comments from the, the community with respect to the three stories, I understand that that's important to the community. But in terms of the character of the community, this building, this proposal, if you go to the front elevation, would, uh, would look and feel like a two-story dwelling. This is the rear. Um, and in the front, as you can see, there's those three small dormers. Otherwise, this is a, appears as a two-story dwelling. So in my view, there's no issue. Terms of the building length and depth, that was also an issue raised by the community. I will note that, uh, the, the 27-meter length and 20-meter depth are all below grade. So, this, this structure, the, the designer has done a good job of confining the space within either the underground or within a roof line. So that additional space that's provided is actually not visible. So, in terms of concerns of length and depth, I know that that's underground. Um, and in terms of setbacks, the front yard setback is generally in line with the adjacent neighbor to the, um, the east. And, uh, the setback of 8.11 is a requirement to 6.46. And that's generally only in relation to the porch, uh, sort of screen walls, uh, which are 6.46. The, the application itself is, is more setback. And in my opinion, that front yard setback variance would not alter the character of the street in any way. And in terms of the porch length, or sorry, width of 2.44 meters versus 2 meters, which is the maximum, that 2.44 meters generally reflects the existing porch entry to the existing home. Uh, and in my opinion, it would have no detrimental impact in terms of, uh, meeting the four tests. Uh, in terms of, uh, the height itself, there is no variance for height in terms of meters and height under the new bylaw, uh, only under the old bylaw, the old bylaw. But, but this height, in terms of the, the building now, has been lowered to, to meet now the new bylaw and is in line with the adjacent neighbor at 115 Ridley to the, um, to the west. So in my view, there is no, uh, concern in terms of the variances under the old, the former. There are only two variances under the former bylaw. One is for the overall height and one is for the, uh, finished floor height of the first floor, which is approximately 40 centimeters higher than, uh, than what is under the old bylaw requirement. But, but there is, those two variances don't exist under the new bylaw. Uh, so most importantly, I would say, in terms of, um, of the design, I think there's been a, a good job has been done to make it appear as a two-story building, a two-story home with very small dormers on the front. And at the back, where there is a balcony, a small balcony facing to the south, it is setback about four, four feet and would not have the views side to side because it's setback set into the roof line. And also, this bill, this home is going to be approximately 18 meters back from the rear property line, well beyond the 11-meter rear setback. So there would be no issue in terms of overlook or privacy, in my opinion, as in relation to the balcony as well. Um, and so with that, I would just say, uh, I agree with planning's condition as well. I had recommended in my letter that I, that we, that these, these plans be attached to the decision so that no, you know, you couldn't build a third story other, other than what is in line with these plans.
Okay, sir, if you could summarize.
I, I, I think I'm finished now. You can, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, I, I had a question with respect to the, uh, what's termed the third story and the dormers. Is, is the, is the third story functional living space? Or are the dormers purely decorative?
No, no, there would be bedrooms, uh, in, in that location. In the top floor would have a bedroom with a bathroom. So one dormer would be for, uh, an accessible bath. And, uh, you know, while, while, yeah, there, there would be vision glass there. They would be quite small. But there would be, there would be vision glass. I mean, the, the, if the committee is so inclined to require those to be blocked, I think the applicant would consider that. Um, if that was a concern of overlook. In my view, whether they were vision glass windows or blocked, I mean, would have no impact on the character of the street or any impact on overlook.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Being none, we'll proceed to our deputants. Who was the next person on the list, Mr. Wills?
Members and Chair, the next person to speak, next deputant is Terry Mills.
Mr. Mills, Terry Mills, are you there?
Terry, go ahead.
Terry Mills, are you there? Gary Mills. Kerry. Kerry Mills, are you there?
I'm here, I'm trying to speak to you.
Okay, thank you, madam, can I get your, uh, pardon me?
The member, the deputant is Terry Mills.
Okay, thank you. Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my, uh, full name is Terry Mills and my address is, uh...
Terry Mills.
101... Yeah, it's, it's on my, uh, the letter that I've sent in that, uh...
Okay, thank you.
...is up on the screen. And I'm a planner. And my, yeah, the address is 801, sorry, Rohampton Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, please proceed.
Yeah, I've been retained by the SARAH, the South Armour Heights Residents Association to, uh, provide an opinion on this development. And if you, uh, look at my submission dated June 29th, uh, in brief, I identify that two major issues are the three-story nature of the scheme, which is a full three-floor to the, it does have knee walls, but it does include, uh, three bedrooms and two bathrooms. So it is basically a full typical third floor that one find under, uh, partially still proof. And the second item of concern is this approach to the basement under the front lawn, which necessitates the removal of that very large tree. And, uh, what is going to go in its place is actually, uh, one underground parking space under the driveway and then storage area. And, uh, in my opinion, uh, you know, front yards, front yard setbacks, et cetera, are provided in residential neighborhoods in terms of enabling, uh, suitable streetscape, the soft landscaping and the like. Basically, in my preparations, I did an assessment primarily focused on the immediate neighborhood context, including both sides of Ridley Boulevard, between Escort Drive and Harley Avenue. Pursuing on the second page, I talk about the four tests and the, uh, in terms of the general intent purpose of the official plan, uh, you know, the, uh, in the text, in the section on neighborhoods, it talks about it being important that growth and change be both sensitive threshold and both fit the existing physical character. And this is a backstop by policy 4.15, which requires that new development proposals be required to respect and reinforce the physical character of the immediate neighborhood context. And in my opinion, this proposed development neither reflects the prevailing nor the substantial patterns of built form existing, existing physical character. Moving on to, uh, the second test regarding the intent and purposes zoning bylaw, uh, I've gone through these in order as they appeared. Uh, the rear side platform setbacks, I'm not supportive of them being reduced, but I won't dwell on that. It's not a major concern. I know time's short. Uh, I've already brought up the subject, number two, being the number of stories requested. And, uh, again, here, uh, you know, it is a great issue in the area and, uh, you know, we have a lot of houses that are really, you know, two stories plus a basement, which happens to be an inappropriate height to catch it as a third floor. But in this case, we really do have a basement, a ground floor, a second floor and a third floor. It's truly a three-story house. And, uh, basically, these have not occurred, uh, in the area, except two exceptions. One of them is actually on Ridley Boulevard, 123, and another one is 77 Mason Boulevard. And both of these are outliers in having a third floor portion. But they're substantially smaller and they're only partial third floor areas, you know, relative to this proposal, which is a substantial completion of all floor area beyond the, within the knee wall condition. Um, moving along to number three, building length. Uh, building length, by definition, the zoning bylaw is between the rearmost and the forwardmost main walls, either above or below ground. That's how they arrive at, it's a figure of 27.36. Um, we'll look at building depth in a moment. It measures slightly differently in that it only starts measuring from the front yard setback to the rearmost main wall. And that's how that figure is lower by approximately, uh, seven meters, representing the extent of the front yard that we dug up and replaced with underground rooms.
Sir, you have 30 seconds, can you summarize?
Okay, well, I'll just jump to the end and thank you very much. Uh, as I say, the most important big factors here are the third story should not be approved and any development in front of the, uh, front yard setback should not be approved. Although I will accept the fact that they want to do it just like, uh, projection under the driveway.
Okay, sir, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Being none, next speaker I have on the list here is Michael Borland. Michael Borland, are you there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and panel members. I just kicked off the line.
Sir, can I get your name and address, please?
Yes, Michael Borland, 108 Joyce Boulevard, Toronto.
Okay, thank you very much. Please proceed.
Uh, my line went silent after the applicant's comment, so I missed about four or five minutes, uh, but I was able to log back in, as you can tell. Um, I just want to make a preliminary comment on a matter of process that you alluded to, Mr. Chairman, when this topic was introduced. Uh, I sent a letter of opposition on June 27th on this file, well before the, the June 29 deadline. I saw it wasn't posted to the site. I resent it on June 30th. Uh, and it has only been posted on the committee of adjustments site yesterday, July the 6th, and didn't make it into the panel members' agenda, I understand. Uh, so that was a full, a full nine days after I sent my letter of objection. Um, and I understand that my letter was only one of seven, uh, letters of opposition that may not have been posted and made, uh, into the panel members' package for today's meeting. Uh, so I raise it as a matter of process only, but I consider it to be a very significant procedural failure affecting the rights of those residents who are opposing this application. Uh, but listen, on to my, um, comments with respect to the application itself. Uh, first of all, these aren't minor, either from an objective or a subjective viewpoint. Uh, many clearly exceed the current zoning bylaw by a material and substantial amount. Uh, we've talked about, the applicant talked about the invisible third story. Uh, but when I look at variance number two, uh, and according to my math calculation, a third story is a 50% increase over the existing bylaw. That's not minor. It's not unimportant or insignificant or inconsequential in this neighborhood. Um, my, my second, uh, comment is on variance number three with the building length. Um, they're looking for a 61% increase over the existing bylaw from 20, they want to go 27.36, the bylaw's 17 meters. Uh, again, that's greater than half. How is that minor? Uh, number six, the east yard setback, um, there, I understand they revised it from 0.94 meters to 1.2 meters, but that's still a 33% departure from the existing bylaw. It's a substantial and material variance from the legally allowable limit. It's not minor. Uh, the height, number 11, the request is for 11.47 meters, a 43% increase over the legal maximum. Again, it's a significant considerable departure from the bylaw and it's not inconsequential or minor. Uh, my second point, I also think this application is an abuse of the minor variance process. It's not a case where the applicant wants a few variances to allow some unique features that don't comply precisely with the bylaw. There's many variances here, 12 in total. Not only are they not minor in nature on an individual basis, as I've mentioned, but when looked in at the aggregate, the height, the length, the depth, the setbacks, uh, they create a structure never envisioned by the architects of the official plan and the zoning bylaws that control development in this neighborhood. Uh, thirdly, and I won't dwell, I know the, uh, the trade, the state, the professional plan and the report and numerous neighbors have submitted objection letters, but just let me say, a house constructed with these major variances would be totally inappropriate and unbecoming this neighborhood. Uh, how could a three-story house be in keeping with the character of this established neighborhood when it would be the only three-story house in the neighborhood? And apart from being monstrous to behold, the height, the length, the incredible mass of the proposed development will almost circumvent loss of sunlight, privacy, views, spacing and openness, all of which were intended to be protected by the bylaws for this neighborhood. And my fourth point is precedent. People have to be able to rely on the outcome of prior cases that involve similar circumstances in order to manage their affairs. Otherwise, they're throwing away time, effort and money.
Sir, can you summarize?
Yes. Uh, on the precedent topic, uh, there's already been two cases decided on appeal. Uh, and, uh, 79 Philbrook and 8 Heading, both were decided on appeal to the Toronto local appeal board. And three houses, three stories represent significant change in the character and are not committed in this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. Our next...
Thank you.
Our next deputant is Robert Rotapell at 118 Ridley Boulevard, are you there?
Chair and members, right this moment, Robert Rotapell has not logged in via WebEx. I do not have a phone number for him in case he's called in. We can, on the other hand, go to Sheila if you'd like.
Okay. Sheila Harrison was the next speaker. Is she there?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Harrison, are you there?
I am here.
Can I get your name and address, please?
My name is Sheila Harrison and I reside at 118 Philbrook Avenue.
Okay, uh, you have the opportunity to make your views known on this application?
Okay, uh, I am a director on the board of the South Armour Heights Residents Association, which is known as SARAH. Uh, SARAH actively monitors and responds to committee of adjustment applications as one of our mandates is to ensure appropriate development that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The 113 Ridley application contains numerous, and in our opinion, major variances. Uh, that they were so concerning when, uh, we received the original application that we engaged a planner, Terry Mills, to provide an expert opinion. And, uh, he has presented his report. Uh, in my time, I'd like to focus... In my time, I'd like to focus specifically among our concern regarding these third-story applications. We have long defended the by law requirement of a two-story limit for [inaudible].
Madam, madam, I don't mean to interrupt, but we've already heard previously about, with regards to the three-story issue. Do you have something to tell us that we haven't heard from the previous speakers?
Well, I'd like to...
Because we don't need to hear it again. Have you got something new to tell us?
Well, I wanted to talk about our experience with the three-story applications and hearings at T-Lab that we have successfully won, and we have received support from the panel members there, that the three stories are not in keeping with. And that opinion is also supported by the planning report, which recommends refusal of the three-story variance. I think that would, you know, explain our request that the committee specifically refuse the variance for these three stories.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? There are no, you have no other speakers registered on this item. We'll go back to the applicant. Sir, you've heard the previous speakers. If you have the opportunity to, to address their concerns?
Yes, sure. I've read and listened to the comments from SARAH and all of the others, and I did mention and I noted that the main concern had to do with the third story. In terms of the character of the street, when I looked at this, you know, closely, my opinion is that the character of the street is how it looks from, you know, the street, how the building looks from the street. And as I said, notwithstanding that there are, there's floor space on the upper level, the third floor, the, the home is very much in keeping with the character of the street in terms of mansard-style roof with, you know, dormers. There are dormers on other homes. Whether or not there's vision glass or not would have no impact in terms of its appearance and in terms of the physical character. As it relates to the parking underneath the front lawn, as noted by Mr. Mills, I would suggest that, you know, providing for parking internal and even underneath the front lawn would be preferable to having cars parked all along the front edge of the streetscape. In this case, that will not preclude the ability to have soft landscaping in terms of, on the front lawn, and we can maintain that and maintain the streetscape from that respect. There was some concerns raised by Mr. Borland about privacy, views, light, openness. I would suggest that and say that there would be no difference in terms of, you know, views or light or openness, whether or not there was a vision glass with, you know, space in the third floor or not. The roof line is the roof line. It would be there, and it's in line with the height of the new by law. And in terms of privacy, I noted that clearly there'd be no issues in relation to privacy from the front dormers onto the street. There would be, and in terms of the back, I noted that that setback balcony would be approximately 18 meters back from the rear lot line and would be in sets such that there wouldn't be side-to-side views. And in terms of precedent, obviously, you know, that is not, every application should be reviewed based on its own merits. Those other applications that went to T-Lab were different applications, and they did not look like this building, and that's why I am noting in this presentation that the design of the building has been designed to appear as a two-story building, notwithstanding there's a third story. And, you know, that is not, that is in keeping with and fitting with the physical character and respecting the physical character of the community, which is the intent of the official plan and zoning by law in this respect. I, I don't believe there was anything else that I noted that I needed to directly respond to. If I missed something, I'm willing to address that.
Okay, thank you. Does the committee have any questions of the speaker? Mr. Bartolo?
Yes, for the speaker, through you there, Mr. Chair. So just to summarize what you were saying before, if these dormers were effectively empty space behind them, this third-story issue would cease to exist, and the only reason it exists is because there's a stairwell that leads up to them. But your building height and look is in keeping with the neighborhood. Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's, that's essentially, that's what I'm saying. It appears from the street just as a two-story building with, with small dormers, and, but there is living space up there and on the interior. And there's also a furnace room up there, too.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of the speaker? Can I get a motion on this revised application, please? Please note that variance number six has been revised so that the, the actual variance has been changed from 0.94 meters to 1.20 meters. But the rest of the application stays as proposed. If I could get a motion on this revised application, Mr. Bartolo?
Want to help?
Mr. Chair, through you, I'd like to put forward a motion to approve this application subject to the following conditions, that variance number six, the ECR setback, be changed to 1.2 meters, that this project be developed substantially in accordance with the plans submitted, and subject to the conditions of the transportation report and urban forestry report. It's my opinion that it is in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood and that this project would be buildable and wouldn't have the opposition that it would. It's not due to the height, it's simply due to the third-story condition, and from a street point of view, it would look the exact same whether or not there was living space behind, behind that third story or not. And with respect to the building length, from a street visualization point of view, a large amount of it is buried underground. So that's my motion, sir.
Mr. Bartolo, I just want to emphasize that we don't have any revised plans that show the 1.2-meter setback.
That's correct.
So in terms of what we, you would, what you would be approving then would be approving the application subject to transportation services, the revised application subject to transportation services and urban forestry conditions?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair, and I will accept your amendment to my motion.
Okay, thank you. Summon the second Mr. Bartolo's motion. That motion doesn't carry. Can I get another motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a different motion, and I share a totally different sentiment to this application, and I believe character is mainly defined by the build of that neighborhood. So for this reason, I am going to follow exactly what the staff report says, and I motion to approve the application and subject to the revised staff report that was provided to us on March 17, I believe, 2020, making again the changes that the applicant made here today with revisions to variance number six being increased to 1.2 meters, subject to forestry, and also subject to all transportation recommendations. That's my motion.
Okay, thank you. Summon to second Ms. Sankar's motion?
Just a question of clarification.
Can we get clarification on that motion, please? Because that motion seems to be similar to what Mr. Bartolo made.
Mr. Bartolo was approving the three-story building.
So then Ms. Sankar has to indicate that that variance is not being approved?
No, no.
If Ms. Sankar is not approving the three-story building, then she has to state that the variance is being refused. You can't just say, as according to the staff.
Oh, okay, so I had put it as subject to the staff recommendations, and the staff recommendation stated that variance number two is refused. And of course, variance number six is made to a minimum of 1.2 meters, and that the property be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan, east side elevation drawings submitted to the committee, as well as subject to forestry and subject to all transportation conditions.
But if you're tying it to the east side elevation, that east side elevation shows a [inaudible] with the amendment?
Repeat that again, just planning. I didn't hear you.
I'm just taking a look at the application. Give me one second.
Those were the elevation drawings that mentioned in the planning report. We'll be back to you in a second.
My computer just... You guys have it up there?
So Mr. Antonacci, may it be appropriate not to put that issue of the elevation drawings in there?
So the variance to height is variance number, number of stories is variance number four. So you're refusing variance number four, which states that the...
Variance number two, the third story.
Why do I have it listed different online? Hold on.
Variance number...
Mine's variance number two.
Can you put the notice up, please? So on the public hearing notice, it's variance number two, which states that there's a three-story dwelling. So that's the variance that you're not approving is the number of stories?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine.
But with regards to the elevation drawings, can we still, can she, can Ms. Sankar still put that recommended planning condition about submitting the elevation drawings?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Antonacci.
So my motion stands, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sankar. Summon the second Ms. Sankar's motion.
Would you just be able, if you could repeat the motion for me?
Okay, the motion for Ms. Sankar is refusing variance number two, which is relates to the number of stories, so refusing the third story, they've revising the application with respect to the setback from 0.94 to 1.2, and then submitting elevation drawings, then submitting drawings relating to elevation to the satisfaction of city planning. And then there's also, let me just double-check here, the transportation services condition and an urban forestry condition.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Mr. Bartolo dissenting. Sir, your application has been approved in part with respect to, with the exception of variance number two relating to the proposed third story, which has been refused. And it's also subject to additional conditions from city planning, transportation services, and urban forestry. Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you. We'll now proceed to item number nine, 7 Bally Ronan Road. I have one speaker registered to speak on this application, Azara Falamarzi. Are you there? Azara Falamarzi, are you there?
Hi.
Yes, hello, thank you very much.
Hi. Yeah, this is Azara.
Can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Azara Falamarzi, 17 Ryder Road 1, and I'm the agent of the owner.
Okay, thank you very much. It's very clear what you're asking for in the application, madam. There's a lot coverage and building height variance requested. We have no other deputants registered to speak on this item. I'll just ask the committee if it has any, if it would like a presentation or it has any questions. Okay, thank you. I also note there are no staff, no recommended staff conditions or comments on this application. Can I get a motion on it, please?
I will move, if I may.
Mr. Klassen?
Oh, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve this application.
Thank you, Mr. Klassen. It's someone to second Mr. Klassen's motion, Ms. Sankar seconds, all those in favor. That motion carries unanimously, madam. Your application is being unanimously approved without condition. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number 10, 89 Glengarry Avenue. We have two speakers registered on this item. Mr. Rubenoff, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to, just going to the application here. Just give me a second. Sir, have you had the, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yes, it's Glenn Rubenoff, Rubenoff Design Group, 697 Mount Pleasant Road.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just wanted to ask if you've had the opportunity to see the 22nd of May City Planning Report?
Yes, I have.
Because they're recommending that the variance number three be modified so that the floor space index does not exceed 0.80 times the lot area. And they're also recommending that, should we choose to approve the application, that the property to be developed in, subject to the attached plans submitted to the Committee of Adjustment, you know, those standard conditions, as well as the applicant is to provide permanent opaque screening along the west edge of the proposed rear deck to a minimum height of 1.5 meters. You've seen those conditions?
Yes, I have.
And there's also, just a moment here, there's also a transportation services report. They have no objections to the application. They had a rather strange one, that you're supposed to get approval from the permanent enforcement group about any effect on permit parking on the street, although I don't, I don't know that that's an enforceable condition. But anyhow, we have one other speaker registered on this item, sir, so she may want to give us a presentation on what you see as the merits of the proposal and discussing it vis-à-vis the comments we've received from city planning.
Sure, thank you, Chair. So this is an application for a new home at 89 Glengarry Avenue. There is precedence, and the only reason I point it out is that the next-door neighbor, if you look at, I provided a map of the area as part of my submissions, which indicates similar developments in the area. The next-door neighbor has an FSI approved at 83%. It's another map, there's another one in there.
Continue with your presentation, Mr. Rubenoff. We're looking for the map for you.
Yeah, so anyways, the, the density of 83% is present immediately next door at 91. It's also 114 on the kitty corner on the other side of Briner is also a density of 83% density. I looked at the difference between ours and the proposed and the immediate neighbor next door. It's a difference of about 25 square feet. and the immediate neighborhood next door. It's a difference of about 25 square feet. The overall house, square, square footage of the house is about 22, 28 square feet. So it's, it's not a monster home by any means. It's just simply redevelopment on the site, which I feel that I did read the staff report. I did, I did see their conditions. It's one of those items where the density that they're requesting, 80% versus 84%, it's not a, it's a significant impact on, on the house, on the layout, but not a significant impact on the, on the actual neighborhood or, or even, it doesn't even factor into a building length factor. We're, we have no variance for building length. So in this case, I feel that the difference between the 84 and 80% is really not very much, considering that there are precedents throughout the neighborhood that are, that are, you know, very close to the proposed density. The conditions, the other conditions of staff recommended are in relation to the wall height. As you can see from the photo there, you see the houses next door. They're quite, this is a small home, just a home. We're building something, you know, in accordance with what's being rebuilt here. But certainly, the, the variance or the condition related to east and west side or an elevation drawings would be substantial in accordance because there's a variance for wall height. That's taken to the top of the, of the peak where the window is, the side elevations they're referring to. I appreciate the graphic. This is amazing. I don't have to show anything. It just comes up automatically. Okay, but besides, the eight, the height requested of 8.68 is to the peak, not to the actual soffit. To the soffit, there is a small increase to 7.97 to the actual soffit. But that's the reason why they put that condition in. It's also, it's a relatively narrow lot. And with the driveway, they've asked for permeable papers, which, which were removed, but that's not an issue. And the same thing with the privacy screen. So I think overall, this application, as presented, I feel fits in perfectly within the redevelopment that's been going on in the neighborhood. It's, it's, no, it's not, it's nothing that I would say is significantly different than anything else. But it is, but it, you know, it is, it is a home for my comment and the, the nature of the variances. The difference between the 80 and 84 is really significant.
Sir, can you summarize, please?
So, so I'm just saying, based on the staff report, the only issue that I had was the, was the item that they requested regarding the floor space and everything else.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you. We have one deputy registered to speak on this item, a Mr. Rob Hollingsworth. Are you there, sir?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Hollingsworth, can I get your full name and address, please?
Yeah, so it's Robert Hollingsworth at 87 Glengarry Avenue.
Thank you very much, sir. If you, if you could just give us your views on the subject?
Yeah, so when we were registering for this, I did indicate that I would, if, whether or not I'd have any opportunity to pose questions based what I, on what I heard today. And at this point, I'm going, I, I do not have a question to pose. Or a presentation. I wanted to hear what the details were and then, you know, make a judgment at that point whether or not I need to put forward a question.
So I'm, I'm sorry, sir. I didn't pick up what you were saying. Were you saying that you're in support of the application?
I'm not, I, I am not disputing it. I'm sort of neutral on this. But, and so I do not have any questions for the, the owner.
No, sir, you have to make your views where we, we give the questions to the, if there are issues that you want the, the applicant to address, raise them now and he'll address them when he comes back on to speak.
Okay, all right. So I, I don't have a question.
You don't ask, just, just, just identify an issue that you have and then we'll ask the speaker to, to address it when he comes back.
Right.
Oh, you have no issue? I'm, I'm just trying to, you have no issues with the application? You're in support of it?
Ah, correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, we'll go back to Mr. Rubenoff. I guess there's nothing to respond to because the previous speaker was in, in favor of the application. So I'll just ask the committee again if it has any questions or comments of the speaker. There being none, could I get a motion on the application, please? Mr. Klassen?
Mr., Mr. Chair, I'll move to reject variance three, but to approve the other variances as subject to transportation and forestry as well.
Okay, Mr. Klassen, just to clarify, there's transportation services, transportation services condition, an urban forestry condition, city planning is the condition that you're proposing to introduce, that the applicant, the property be developed substantially in accordance with the east and west side elevation drawings submitted to the committee of adjustment, attached as attachments one and two to their report. Permeable materials are to be used for the proposed driveway, and the applicant is to provide permanent opaque screening or fencing along the west edge of the proposed rear deck and second floor front balcony, front balcony with a minimum height of 1.5 meters from the floor. Is that the?
Yes, thank you. That's correct. Thank you.
Someone to second that motion?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question or pose a friendly amendment?
Certainly.
Is, Mr. Klassen, is it your intention to go with the recommended FSI of decimal eight, or are you going back down to the decimal six?
No, I, the intention was to adopt the, the recommendation from staff, which is .8.
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So you, you want to?
That's the big one here.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Could I, again, let me just clarify. Mr. Klassen's motion is to, in summary, to adopt the city, the recommendations from the city planning report, including reducing the floor space index to .08 times the lot area, and then I guess the transportation services and the urban forestry conditions. That's the motion Mr. Klassen is making, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Could someone to second that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll propose a friendly amendment, if I can.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bartolo, I didn't get that.
I'd, I'd like to put forward a friendly amendment to Mr. Klassen's proposal.
You'll second it?
No, I'd like to amend it.
Okay, you want, okay, you want to put in, Mr. Bartolo, you wanted to amend Mr. Klassen's motion?
Yeah, I, my, my justification, I'd like it to remain at the proposed decimal eight-four. I mean, I think we're talking a total, a grand total of less than 30 square feet across the project, and I think it's going to cause unnecessary hardship on the project and owner to revise this for, you know, less than 30 square feet, in my opinion.
Okay, okay, okay. Can you just summarize then what you propose, what you're proposing as amendment to Mr. Klassen's motion?
To increase the permissible FSI from decimal eight to decimal eight-four.
Can I interrupt for a second? Changing a variance is not a friendly amendment. Either support the motion or new motion, or someone has to second it. He totally changed the variance. That's not a friendly amendment. So we need to vote on?
Yeah, so we, we have a motion from Mr. Klassen.
Okay, I'll.
So if, okay, if, it's, who wants to second Mr. Klassen's motion? Ms. Sankar seconds. All those in favor? Okay, all those in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Sir, your application has been approved with the exception of variance number three, which has reduced the floor space index to a maximum of 0.80 times the lot area. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it. We are, we are adjourned till 1:30. Committee members, thanks very much for your patience. I know how frustrating it is to deal with, hear some of these submissions. So thanks very much for your patience. Appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll be back at 1:30.